Okay. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the June twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty-three virtual meeting of the Jersey City zoning board of adjustment. Since COVID and consistent with state law, we are holding our meeting via Zoom. I would like to call this meeting to order and ask Francisco Espinoza to take roll call.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Shadine.
Yes.
Commissioner Rujo.
Here.
Commissioner Donnelly.
Here.
Commissioner Park.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Green.
Here.
And Vice Madam Chair.
Here.
We have a total of seven commissioners to name.
Okay, do we have any sunshine announcements that we need to make?
Yes, in accordance with the open public's meeting, a notice has been given to the Jersey Journal, the Jersey City Reporter, El Especialito, and posted with the city clerk on Tuesday, June twenty seventh. We have the notices to be marked.
Page one, received and marked.
Can we please stand for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation and the God in this world with liberty and justice for all.
Is there any staff that needs to be sworn in tonight?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Staff, please raise your hand. Do you swear that the testimony you will provide this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but truth?
Yes.
Yes.
Please state your full names for me, one at a time, starting with Francisco.
Francisco Espinoza.
You.
Matthew De Silva.
Thank you. And.
Tanya. Do we have any correspondence?
I think Tanya might pop in a little bit later.
Okay, but staff is sworn. Thank you.
All right, let me share my screen to go over the items for tonight. All right, can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, so my agenda might look a little different. This is the action agenda. So I'll just go briefly in the Germans, so everyone in the public can understand. The Germans, we have K Z twenty-two dash zero one six. The address is one eighteen and one twelve Old Bergen Road. They have carried to August tenth with preservation of notice. And testimony was also taken for this application, so you will not receive another notice. Case Z twenty-two dash zero six six, the address is one fifty-eight Oakland Avenue. They have requested to carry to the next meeting, July thirteenth, with preservation of notice as well. And then moving into new business, we have item ten, case Z twenty-two dash zero eight nine. The address is one twenty-eight Glenwood Avenue. They have requested to carry to July thirteenth with preservation of notice. Item number twelve, case Z twenty-two dash zero seven seven. The address is one oh four Glenwood Avenue. They have also requested to carry to July thirteenth. I just wanna, yeah, thirteenth. Item thirteen, case Z twenty-two dash zero five three, the address is eighty-eight Highway one thirty-nine. They also have requested to carry to July thirteenth with preservation of notice. And items fourteen and fifteen, this is case Z twenty-two dash zero seven five. The address is eight fifty West Side Avenue. And item fifteen, case Z twenty-two dash zero seven nine, the address is one forty-six to one fifty-two Glenwood Avenue. They have both requested to carry to the July thirteenth meeting with preservation of notice. And all other items will be moving forward to.
All right, so I guess we should begin with case Z twenty-three dash three six, oh, zero three six, a one-year extension for ten twelve Berkeley Place. Okay.
Veronica.
Hi, good evening, everybody. For the record, Veronica Schmeele of Conne Foley, on behalf of the applicant. The application, Z twenty-three dash zero three six, is for the property at ten to twelve Berkeley Place. And the applicant is seeking its second extension for one year. By way of quick background for this property, the applicant obtained preliminary and final major site plan approval with D variance to construct a new four-story multifamily building with twelve units and seven interior parking spaces under Z nineteen dash zero fifty-seven. On October twenty-second, two thousand and twenty, those protections would have expired on October twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two. Thereafter, the applicant was approved for a one-year extension, extending those protections until October twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three, under Z twenty-two dash double oh seven. So now applicant is requesting its second extension, as I said, for one year, which would extend those protections until October twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four. As the board has heard in many other applications, COVID nineteen and the resulting supply chain and market condition issues have delayed this project. But the applicant's focus and finances are currently focused on another project in Jersey City, only a few blocks away from this. So this project at ten to twelve Berkeley is next on the applicant's queue, but accordingly, it's requesting this extension for one year.
Okay. Okay, um, do we have to see if there's any, anyone in the public to make any comments, or we could just vote on this? Does any?
I don't see any hands raised at this time for this application.
Okay, um, do any of the staff have any comments they want to make, or?
Staff stands by the applicant's attorney's testimony and supports the one-year extension for this item.
Any commissioners have any comments to make?
No.
Okay, if not, can I get a motion?
I motion to accept the one-year extension for ten twelve, which is case Z twenty-three zero thirty-six. Ten twelve Berkeley Place for a one-year extension.
Can I have someone second that motion?
Second.
Can I take, Francisco, can you take a vote?
On a motion to approve the extension, Commissioner Shadine.
Yes.
Commissioner Rujo.
Yes.
Commissioner Donnelly.
Yes.
Commissioner Park.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Green.
Yes.
And Vice Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion carries all in favor.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay, um, our next item on the agenda is number eleven, case number seven two one dash zero eight two. Minor site plan for seventy-five Crescent Avenue.
Promoting Chuck Harrington.
Okay. Do any of these individuals have to be sworn in or recognized or anything, or?
Yeah.
Okay, good evening.
Yeah, while you're setting up, Chuck, you, this is a motion case, a notice case, rather. You have your notice, your proof of service, your affidavit of publication, and Iris, I lost you. Yeah, we'll mark this as A one for this application, please.
Yes, A one is received and marked.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. If for the record, well, actually, before we begin, if Charles Height is the planner, I think he needs to be promoted. Okay, so for the record, Charles Harrington, Conne Foley, on behalf of the applicant. The application before you tonight, you know, has, we've been working on it for some time, as indicated on the case number, which is a Z twenty-one case. So it's a, it's a unique lot in the R one zone, as it's twenty-five by two hundred feet deep. So it's oversized for the R one zone. Yeah, if you're not familiar with it already, it's located across the street from Lincoln High School. And it's located directly adjacent to an apartment building to the, to the north. So we are proposing tonight a four-story building with, with six residential units. You'll see during the presentation that the design presents as a three-story from the street, and then the fourth story is set back. A lot of the changes of the project that you see tonight are a result of, of comments and meetings with the planning department. I know we did have a community meeting some time ago. I don't recall, it was a while ago, but we made some changes as a result of, of, of that meeting as well. So this is a, you know, a project that has, has gone through a lot of review. And we think it's, you know, appropriate, appropriate project. You'll see, we've moved, you know, the building is, we are asking for a rear yard setback or from your typical rear yard, but we've worked with planning to move it back to, to re-mitigate the, any visual impact on, on the, on the properties to the south. And as noted, the three-story look from, from the street and, and the setback, that is also something that we've worked with, with, with planning. So with that said, I have two witnesses tonight. Jeffrey Lewis is our architect. And Charles Height is our planner. So without further ado, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hand it off to Jeff Lewis. And, and I note that he's gonna mark his, his plans as A two, because he, we made a recent tweak on, on a couple of the sheets, just to update the detail of the Jason building to show how, how this building is consistent with that height. So now I'll hand it off to Jeff.
Mr. Lewis, please raise your hand. Hello. So you swear that the testimony you will provide this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please state your full name, spell your last.
Jeffrey Lewis, L E W I S.
Thank you. Witness is sworn. Please proceed.
Okay, Jeff. For the record, my license, my license is in good standing in the state of New Jersey, inactive at the time being.
And Jeff, if the plans you're presenting tonight, we're gonna mark them as A two, is that correct?
Yes.
A two is received and marked.
Okay, so I'm gonna start showing my screen here. Bring up our drawings. Okay, so as Chuck mentioned, this is a two-hundred-foot-deep lot at seventy-five Crescent Avenue. Just to get a little more familiar with the building next to us. We do have a three-and-a-half-story building to the right of us. The building is at the front, built on the property line, and then stepped back off the property line. And then on the left, we have a three-story building, which is set back a couple of feet from the property line. To the right, you can see our proposed site plan. It is kind of hard to see because it's so small, so I'm going to zoom in on it a little bit. But that means we can't look at the whole thing at the same time, but we can make it work, I'm sure. Okay, so, starting at the front of the property here, what we're proposing. We will do a new concrete curb, as well as a new ten-foot concrete curb cut, new concrete sidewalks, and one new street tray, in the public right of way. Then moving on to our property, we have a twelve-foot, five-inch setback, which will match the building to our right at seventy-seven Crescent. In the space that's going to be front yard, we're using space in front of the lobby entry doors. Right brick pavers as a walkway. And then at the driveway area, we're providing, providing these open grid concrete pavers to provide as much green space as we could with the driveway there. The building itself is built property line to property line. You can see we have two window wells, one really long one along the left side of the building, and then a shorter one on the right side of the building. We do have an internal driveway that goes all the way, the entire length of the building, and brings us to the back here, and show the backyard, where we have our parking area. There's a total of four parking spaces in the back of the building. One is a handicap space, and that's located under the building itself. And then there are three additional spaces located in the rear yard, outside of the building. Behind the spaces, we do have a six-hundred-and-seventy-one square foot lawn area with some shrubs to buffer the parking from that lawn area. And then all of this is enclosed with a six-foot board-on-board wood fence. Now I'm gonna slide down to the floor plans. So here we are looking at the first floor plan. And I want to start at the front, at the bottom right here, where we have our garage door and an exit door, which both lead to this driveway area. The driveway, as I mentioned, goes from front all the way to the back of the building. We have a wall built along the property line, so this will be an enclosed driveway. It's not an open, spilted building. And so the driveway, besides providing access to the parking spaces and to the backyard, also provides access to our six bicycle parking spaces. Our meter rooms, our meter area, our sprinkler room, as this will be a fully sprinkled building. And then also the trash recycling area and the main stair to the building, both of which are also accessed via the hallway and the main lobby, which of course is entrance from Crescent Street. Lastly, on this floor, we do have one half of a duplex apartment. The entire apartment is one thousand ninety-one square feet. It's a two-bedroom, two-bath apartment. And here I could just mention one time that all the apartments in this building have washer dryer in the apartment, and also have ducted heat and air conditioning. Going back to this apartment, on the ground level, we are showing a bedroom, an ADA bathroom, and a small ADA kitchenette, as well as an internal stair that goes up to the second floor, and I'm just going to follow this up. Here, we're looking at the second floor plan. And in the center of the building, you can see the second floor of that apartment, where we have one additional bedroom, an additional bathroom, and then the living, dining, kitchen area, which is also accessed from the main building staircase. The rest of the second floor, there are two apartments, one in the front, one in the back. Both of these apartments are two bedrooms, two-bath apartments. All of them, where am I, sorry? The front apartment is nine hundred and sixty-eight square feet, and then the rear apartment is one thousand forty-seven square feet. Now here, if I can, let me zoom a little bit out, so I can show these floors together, because we do have on the third floor and the setback fourth floor, three duplex apartments that are combined between these floors. Let me start at the front. The front apartment is very similar to the floor below, where we have two bedrooms and two baths on the third floor, and then we add an internal staircase, which comes up to the fourth floor and provides one additional bedroom for a third bedroom and a bathroom. And I'd just like to note that this is set back a little more than eighteen feet from the front of our building, so it's set back pretty far from the main building front. Moving on, the rear unit is also a three-bedroom, three-bath apartment. Oh, I should have just mentioned that that front apartment is one thousand two hundred and six square feet. The rear apartment, which is also three bedrooms, three baths, is one thousand three hundred and thirty-eight square feet. However, this apartment has two bedrooms and three bathrooms on the third floor. And then when you get to the top floor, there's only one bedroom and no bathroom at all. And then lastly, we have the middle apartment, which is a one-bedroom, one-bath apartment, six hundred and sixty-eight square feet in total. Here we have living, dining, kitchen, and the bathroom on the main level, and then a stair that goes up, and there's just one bedroom on that fourth floor. I do want to note, we mentioned there were a few changes that we made. One clarifying change that we made was on this fourth floor, where one or two of these apartments were showing sliding doors. There aren't going to be roof decks here at the time being, so they were changed just to reflect the windows that we are going to be providing. Lastly, on the roof plan, we do have a common staircase, which is coming up just to provide access to all the air conditioning units. And then here, we're showing, I just want to bring up the roof of the mezzanine level of that fourth floor. We're providing what's called a blue roof. Basically, they're kind of these shallow pools on the roof that are sized to store all the stormwater that we're required to store, and then slowly release it back into the system. And that was not sized by me, it was sized by an engineer. Now we're gonna move on to our building elevation. On the left here, we are looking at the front elevation, and the last thing I want to mention, as Chuck did mention, the second change that we made was the building next to us on the right. It was shown improperly. It was only shown to be about three and a half stories tall, when in reality, it's a very tall, three-and-a-half-story building. As you can see, it's, it's much taller than the three stories that we're showing at the front of our building, and honestly, it's as tall as that fourth story, which, as I mentioned, is set back over eighteen feet from the front of our building. So, back to our building. Obviously, this is a fairly modern-looking building. To walk through the finishes, the brick will be a smooth red brick finish. Our other main building finish are nichihua fiber cement panels, and we're providing those in two different colors. At this main section here, we're proposing an off-white panel. And then at the small cancer lever, and in between the windows to the right, we're proposing light beige fiber cement panels. Looking down through the ground floor, we're proposing dark gray, all-glass storefront entry doors for both the lobby and the store that leads into the driveway area. The garage door itself is a solid metal garage door. Again, the color will be off-white to match the finish of the nichihua panels. And above all these windows will be black aluminum frame windows. Sliding over to the rear elevation on the right, again, we have black frame windows. However, the building finish is now off-white vinyl smith siding. We have a smooth daco finish at the base of the building, and we do have three columns so that we can get out to that parking area in the back, and those columns are going to be wrapped in wood and then painted off-white. Here, we're looking at our two side elevations, and again, the finish is all vinyl siding. This is built on the property line, this section here, on the left side elevation, and then we have this very large area with windows that is set back. And then on the right, we're on the property line everywhere, except for this small area where there's windows. This area at the front of the building is pushed up right against seventy-seven Crescent, so it won't be finished with vinyl siding. That would conclude my direct testimony. Thank you so much for your time. Chuck, is there anything you'd like me to address before I close?
No, I, I think you, you've addressed everything. I would just defer to the chairwoman, whether she would like to wait until we complete the testimony of Mr. Height before asking questions, or if the board would.
We'll wait until everyone is finished.
Okay, thank you.
Well, good evening.
Good evening. Sorry, Mr. Harrington, I interrupted you. Mr. Height, do you swear that the testimony you will provide this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your full name for me, spell your last.
Yes, Charles Height. Last name is spelled H E Y. D is David. K is Thomas.
Thank you. Witness is sworn.
Okay, Mr. Height, you, you heard Mr. Lewis's testimony. If you could just please then address the requested variances tonight.
Yes, I was present for the testimony. We did also review the plans and conduct the site visit and review the zoning for the, for the application. This project is still under the existing zoning in the R one district, which does not permit multifamily uses. As such, we require a formal D one use variance. There are a few associated requirements that we're also gonna note, but they're all related to the use variance application. The board should be considering this as a particular suitability case. It comes from the Medici case in New Jersey that establishes the justifications that could be provided to approve this application for a use that's not explicitly permitted in the zone. And what that means is particular suitability specifically about this site that would lend itself for the intended use. So just to run through some of the physical aspects, existing conditions of the property. It is a vacant parcel in what would be a residential portion of this block, meaning there are other residential uses. Some permitted one and two families in the area, but actually, more multifamily uses, multifamily residential uses on the block. The other aspects about the site that are very unique is the lot size, which is really dictated by the lot depth. So this lot is oversized by the R one standards. It's approximately five thousand square feet. It's, I think technically, four thousand nine hundred and ninety-four square feet. But it's almost double what would be otherwise permitted in the R one, or what the R one is zoned for. That's really dictated, as I said, by the lot depth, which is approximately two hundred feet in depth. There's really not an appropriate way to subdivide this property, because you would essentially create a two very narrow properties or a landlocked parcel in the rear. So we do have an oversized lot that we are unable to subdivide into conforming properties. Given that it's vacant and immediately adjacent to other multifamily uses, that sets the framework up for inappropriate multifamily use. We did work with planning staff and did have input from the community with respect to how to scale the proposed multifamily use. So we are proposing six units. In terms of density, that establishes a density of fifty-two units per acre. The board is probably aware that the implicit, it's not a formal requirement, but the implicit density in the R one district is thirty-five units an acre, so we're slightly higher than that. But we balance that out by looking at the existing conditions on the block. And they do range, but as I said, on this end of, of the block, the other, and the western edge is actually in a redevelopment area. On this edge of the block, there are approximately nine out of fourteen parcels that are multifamily. Several of the immediate parcels to the north on seventy-seven Crescent and seventy-nine Crescent are two nine-unit buildings, and their densities range from, they're approximately ninety-six and ninety-seven each, respectively. So the immediately adjacent structures, in other words, are substantially higher in terms of density. They actually are very similar in lot depth, where they have approximately two hundred feet. They have three additional units, which creates that increase in, in density. So relative to those, we are almost half the dense, the density of those existing structures. We are also proposing a four-story structure at forty-five feet. As Mr. Lewis mentioned, the four-story, there's two critical elements there. It's substantially set back, so the building from the streetscape does read as a three-story structure. That setback is approximately eighteen feet, seven inches. In addition, that four-story is approximately five hundred and seventy-seven square feet in total. It's the additional bedrooms to provide some additional living space for these units in that area, and that's those bedrooms. That four-story only accounts for eighteen percent of the total footprint. So it's substantially less than the floors below, the second and third floor, the second and, second and third floor. Other bulk conditions that I just wanted to call out are the side yard. So we have presented this structure as a continuation of the zero lot line multifamily buildings just to the north. So we are proposing, as Mr. Lewis said, a lot line to lot line in terms of the side yards. And what that means is a proposed zero-foot side yard setback. However, in the R one, there is required to be relief when you have detached homes to create for appropriate light and air for any windows that face the side yard. So as you can see from the plans that Mr. Lewis showed, we do create those inserts, setbacks, further back into the building, into the proposed building. We provide some windows as well, and they're strategically located, and we also do that on both sides in two instances. But I think it's an appropriate balance between an extension of the existing multifamily homes that are lot line, zero lot line, and then the attached, the detached two-family house that's just to the south. Lastly, one bulk condition that we are proposing is a lot coverage of approximately sixty-two percent, where sixty percent's proposed. This is really just a product of an appropriate layout by the architect, by Mr. Lewis. And we do feel that the sixty-two percent, the additional two percent, is, is not substantial enough to warrant any impacts from the overall mass. um to warrant any impacts from the overall mass. As I mentioned, the four-story is substantially less than the floors below. We do provide for setback relief, and we do respect that rear yard setback requirement in the R one district. Those are the technical positive criterias, cri- criteria as I see that apply to the design of the project and the particular suitability. Uh we also do have special reasons from the municipal land use law that we further. Uh I'll just cite a few. Um purpose A to uh guide appropriate development um for the promotion of the public health, safety, and general welfare. Again, we're transitioning a vacant lot for residential use in a residential zone. I think that is an appropriate um guidance of development in the state. Um we are also uh furthering uh purpose E, which is the promotion of appropriate population densities. Uh again, we are not the most dense uh development on this block, and and we're not the least, but we're an appropriate density given the substantially oversized lot. Uh so I do think it's an appropriate population density in the appropriate location. Um I should also mention that um with respect to the overall neighborhood, we're right across the street from the Lincoln School. Um Monticello Avenue is a main northwest, north-south corridor where a block uh we're we're on the block that the other side of the block fronts onto Monticello Avenue. And we're two blocks north of Communipaw, which is the main east-west corridor uh through this portion of the city. So we do have access to a mix of uses along those two corridors as well as public transit. And the nearest light rail station is the Martin Luther King Light Rail Station, which is approximately point six miles away. So we do have access in terms of its location in the neighborhood. Um lastly, uh we're transitioning a vacant property into um a a modern building um that we believe will enhance the overall neighborhood, uh and I believe that provides um uh fosters purpose I to promote a desirable visual environment through creative design techniques. Other than that, uh we are proposing a curb cut. The curb along this, the existing curb along this portion of uh this property is is really just paved um asphalt. There's no real curb or sidewalk existing. So we are making substantial improvements along the streetscape, including uh a sidewalk and street tree uh along with the um uh the curb cut that's that's being proposed, which is ten feet wide. That is the bulk of the positive criteria. Um with respect to the negative criteria, I don't believe there's any substantial detriment to uh the zone plan or zoning ordinance. Again, the new master plan does speak to a variety of housing types. Um on average, uh we are proposed, well, the bedroom count, we're proposing one-one bedroom, three-two bedrooms, two-three bedrooms, so it's a very healthy mix. Um more slated to actual larger units, uh and that calculates out to an average unit size of one thousand and fifty-three square feet, which I think is is uh appropriate, given we're across the school. Um it's a very nice location for for new families to uh to be able to call home. And uh we do provide that setback um when you go further into the building with respect to the side yard. So I think there's a balance of um the design and providing for light and air um adjacent to the the building. That's really my direct testimony. Uh I think I've covered the positive and negative criteria, but I know I try and move through my testimony quickly. Be happy to clarify or answer any questions that the board might have.
Okay, thank you. Um Tanya or Francisco, is there anyone from the public out there to make any comments?
Yes, I do see one hand raised. I'm promoting them.
Hello?
Hello, sir, do you have a camera that you can activate?
Uh hold on. Can I read the timekeeper?
Yes.
How to activate uh? Yes, okay. Yeah.
Very good. Thank you.
Sure, I have a question.
Sir, first we'll swear you in. If you swear that the testimony you provide this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please state your full name for me and spell your last name.
M R U G U L. Last name P A T E L.
P A P E L?
P A T E L.
And your address is?
One fifty-one St. Paul, seventy, Jersey City.
Okay, thank you. Please proceed.
Mr. Matity, you have three minutes.
Yep. I had a question, like the ATH date having on the agenda today or no?
No, it it is gonna be carried to the July thirteenth meeting.
July thirteenth, I think. Okay. Thank you very much.
Just to let you know, you won't receive another notice, so just remember that on July thirteenth at six thirty, um come to the meeting.
Also, I I mean, we are noticing any more mails, certified mail?
No.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Thanks.
Okay, Francisco, is there anyone else out there and from public?
No, there are no other hands raised.
Okay, can we hear from the staff regarding this project?
Yeah, uh so staff does agree with uh Mr. Height's testimony, but I do wanna show the board my staff memo, and I'll be very brief. Let me share my screen. Okay. So I did wanna show the board an aerial view of what the site looks like. It's substantially larger than the rest of the lots. It is one of, I believe, four lots that are over a hundred and fifty feet in depth. So I did wanna just talk to a few points. I think Mr. Height covered this. Um. So I did wanna just speak to the rear yard setback. Um since this is such a unique lot, over a hundred and fifty uh feet in depth, it actually is two hundred feet. So it triggers one of the clauses within the R one standards, specifically thirty-four dash forty um bulk standards for one and two family dwellings, section seven, subsection B. So it states that where lot depth exceeds one hundred feet, the minimum rear yard as determined by the standard by the above standard shall be increased by fifty percent of the portion of the lot depth in excess of one hundred feet. So what this means is the applicant's rear depth is two hundred feet. Fifty percent of the portion of that lot depth in excess of a hundred is fifty. So the rear yard basically um is required to be seventy. The applicant's proposing forty-six, so I just wanted to um bring that up to the board and let them, that you all know. This is definitely a unique situation. We rarely get to see lots um in of this size. In terms of positive criteria, as was mentioned earlier, the propos- the proposal restores a residential use of the property in accordance with the zone district, which is currently a vacant lot. Uh the proposed multifamily is appropriate for the oversized nature of the lot, and the proposed bulk bulk associated with the multifamily use is consistent with the character of the of the surrounding context. Um the proposal will also remove the existing one hundred percent lot coverage and provide a permeable rear yard and front yard landscaping to reach a conforming, I believe, is eighty-four point five six percent lot coverage. Please correct me, this memo was written in May's. Charles or Chuck, correct me if that's um incorrect. Um it is the staff, it is the opinion of the staff that the applicant meets the following intent of the land use objectives of the Jersey City Master Plan. So it promotes continued efforts to enhance residential neighborhoods. In this case, it is um constructing on a vacant lot to provide housing for residents. Uh ensures the city avail- the city's available, housing is balanced, and meets the needs of all current and future residents. And a key element of the pilot proposal was to increase overall residential density in the R one district to no more than fifty-three units an acre. This is from the city, the Jersey City Master Plan, then use element, chapter five. Um you can find it at page one fifty-four. Then this proposal is actually uh fifty-two dwelling units an acre, so it's under what was recommended in the master plan. Um staff sees this use as appropriate for the area, given that sixty-four percent of of the properties on the block are also existing non-conforming multifamily structures. And therefore, um staff sees the proposal as promoting uh purpose E. So to establish uh to promote the establishment of appropriate population densities. As far as the negative criteria, the existing non-conforming, uh non-conformities help validate that the use is not out of character for this neighborhood. Uh the commercial quarter on Monticello will benefit from the increased density of the proposal. And with that said, staff recommends approval with conditions outlined in my staff memo.
Thank you, Francisco. Um do any of the commissioners have commissioners have any comments?
Um, go ahead.
I just, I have a question. Um I see there that there's a big depth of the backyard. You're going a hundred and fifty feet to the back. Uh how is this gonna affect the other tenants and the other properties in that area? How are they, if they want to, is this gonna affect their yard and their buildings, or how's that going to work with that building going all the way back? Jeffrey, Mr. Lewis, I assume that would be you?
Um. So we are, we are obviously longer than the building next to us on each side. Um Carlos, did we do, did we do a shadow study for this property? That would show that effect?
We we did not, uh we did not do a shadow study because the four-story only occurs on a portion of the overall floor. I don't think that was prepared.
If I could jump into, I that that was an issue that was raised by the staff, the the planning staff, uh because the building was initially proposed uh longer. Uh and they had some concerns about um, you know, how deep it went. So what you're looking at now is a result of of the revisions and and it really backs up. Uh um I mean, I'm looking at the property owners list. The rear of the property i- it really backs up to the properties that front on Brinkerhoff Street. So you're, you know, when they're in their backyard, they're, the the building is is set back, you know, pretty far from from their buildings. So it's it's not like you are um up against uh uh properties that are directly adjacent to you. The the backyards really are coming off of Brinkoff, so I think that's mitigated, you know, or or any effect is mitigated from from uh those lots being per- perpendicular.
And and um Chuck, I can, I can just share, if I could share my screen for one second. Um so these are both images from the site plan set, and they, it's the side yard elevation. Um this is the left side elevation, which is going to be adjacent to the properties to the south. So on the left, we have the aerial image from the site plan set. And this property runs as as uh Francisco mentioned, it runs substantially deep um into the property. So while we have this parking lot here, um we do have windows that will be in this area as the building extends. But we we don't have any windows beyond that, which really occurs at more of the private rear yards areas um to, I guess, twelve through eighteen on Brinkerhoff Street. So I think that was taken into account into the in the design of this um left facade. And to the north, um I believe that that this is a parking lot associated with the elementary school, just further lot. So there's no impact with the adjacent land that's on the uh, that would be fronting the um right side elevation. So that's, that's where we came a little bit more closer uh to the zero lot line for a longer portion of the building along this northern property line. Hope that, I hope that helps um with the expansion.
It does help. Thank you so much. What is the width of the property?
Twenty, approximately twenty-five feet, and I I do stand corrected with that rear yard. I I did say it was conforming, but um I realized we recalculated it. Um we did provide a substantially greater rear yard than the initial proposal. So I didn't realize with the change in the calculation that we would still technically need relief. Um but again, this is a a very unique situation with a property that's two hundred feet deep.
Okay, Kate, did you have a question or?
Yes, um uh I guess my my first question is more of a planning question. I I noted that for the ground floor um that includes part of the the first floor of the of the duplex, and it's handicapped accessible, that there's also a kitchenette there. Um. Does the zoning ordinance in in this area permit ground level apartments?
Yep, I I can answer that, um, Ms. Donnelly. The uh the the zoning doesn't uh permit or prohibit. It actually would require uh residential on the ground floor and and let's say a a one and two family home. Um Crescent isn't um a main mixed-use corridor, so having uh a ground floor unit um does address the ADA accessible accessibility.
Yeah, yeah, which I, which I kinda get, but I, but I also thought that by having a kitchenette there um there might be a temptation to, for some, to to change it and to add one more uh unit. And to and to set, separate that unit with the uh the handicapped accessible kitchenette and bathroom.
Yeah, I I I obviously, that's not the intent with these plans. And any change like that would require a substantial reconfigure, reconfiguration of the building utilities. So were that to occur, there would have to be partitions in the in the second story. There would have to be access in the second story if that was a unit, so.
Yeah, I know, but that kind of thing happens all the time.
I it it's more so in this case because you'd have to have direct access to that rear portion of the second floor. And I don't think we have that, so I I could defer to Mr. Lewis, but it would be virtually impossible because there's no direct access to that duplex portion of the the unit on the second floor.
Um actually, we do have a door on the second floor there. It could be removed if it made people more comfortable. I wouldn't have a problem removing it. Um I do understand your concern, and I know the best, we do need the ADA apartment on the ground floor. The best we could do is make sure that we had that that furnace and all the utilities are combined for those two units, so they can't separate them. You know, we don't do, we didn't do separate utilities for each of the, each of the floors to make sure that they have to stay together. The internal stair helps a little, but I'd be, we could remove that second door if that.
No, no, I I I I just, I I also just kind of want, I I and I wanted to know about if there were any other general prohibitions, like, you know. And for example, if this was planned in a, in a flood zone, that that would be a no-go. Um, okay, but, okay, thanks. And I, of course, I would hate hate the idea of being like, oh, yeah, change that. And then it but, and then you actually have a possibility of having a handicapped tenant there, and it does not help the situation. So I get it. I I just wanna explore that a little bit. So um my next question is more of a planning question. Um, you know, one of the main arguments made was that um, you know, this actually is positive criteria because you're taking a va- a vacant lot and putting kind of denser de- development on it. But in my reading of of Medici, I I don't you, you could, you could improve that lot by just putting something that's R one conforming there. So I I don't really understand why that was in Mr. Height's arguments. You have other arguments, and I don't understand why it was in Francisco's memo. Um because if we start using that as a criteria that every time you do something non-conforming in a vac- vacant lot, it's positive. I think you go down a slippery slippery slope, and I think that's problematic. Um. But one of the the other things, though, mentioned was that, and I agree, this is an odd and gigantic lot. And you do have other non-conforming, you know, uses on on the block, and that that all makes sense. But you're using the gigantic size of the lot to justify your use variance, but you still can't meet the year, the rear yard setback or combined front yard and rear yard setback. So I I don't get that, why, why you're you're kind of using the the gigantic size to justify the variance, but you can't even get the setback setbacks right.
I I I can feel both those questions. Um and then if we need to, Mr. Lewis can talk about the design. I, I, I can feel both those questions. Um, and then if we need to, Mr. Lewis can talk about the design. Um, with respect to the vacancy and, um, the. Case for particular suitability, I think the, the positive aspect there is that it's, it's not a previously improved. It's, it's. There's one scenario where we're, um, raising a, an older structure or a dilapidated structure. Um, but in this case, given that it's, it's a vacant lot, we're speaking to the efficiency of land use. So from a planning concept, um, there are opportunities in a built urban environment where you can be more efficient. In an appropriate way. And that's where we look at purpose E, the establishment of appropriate population densities. This is the appropriate location to advocate for more development because it is a vacant lot. We're not demolishing any existing structure and, and it's an oversized lot. So that, that really the oversized nature is the. Main foundation. The fact that it's vacant gives us an opportunity where we don't have such a. A negative impact with the, with any demolition of the structure. Um, if that helps. Uh, the other aspect. Um, and, and I, if, if you could remind me of your second question, the, the, the element of it.
It, it was that you're, you're using the, the uniqueness and the fact that it's an oversized lot. To help justify kind of, uh. To, to justify the, the use variance and, and I do get that and I do understand it. But if it's that big, then why can't you meet the, 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 the setback requirements?
Yeah, so, so the conformity with setbacks and, and I, I realize that the, the city is actually, um, in midst of, of changes with. That concept of if you conform from a form-based standpoint, then. You actually wouldn't require to come to this board. So, um, this board may or may not be aware of, of that. Element of, of one of the new ordinances, but, um, what you're speaking to is. If you conform to a certain building form, the, the setbacks, the height, um, then. Your use would be otherwise viewed as permitted. Your density would be viewed as permitted. Um, I think the design of this building is really based on a reflection of the adjacent. Lot pattern and uses. That parking lot to the north is really benign use. Um, meaning that running the zero lot line setback for the majority of that is an opportunity, um, to really. Reflect what's immediately adjacent to this property as well as to accommodate the larger units. We thought that from a design standpoint, the three, two-bedroom units and two-three-bedroom units, which is. Typically not proposed when you're trying to sit and meet. The setbacks was the better alternative in this instance. So that does require some additional. Bulk relief. It is subsumed with the D one use variance request, but I think that, that was our approach. Provide the larger family units in this location close to schools, close to the two main corridors. A very nice residential neighborhood. It, it is a more dense residential neighborhood. Um, and it does have a very unique lot pattern, um, not only for the lot, but also the adjacent properties.
Okay, there are definitely parking challenges on Crescent though. Um. And my last question is, it, it seems to me, this is for the, the, the architect. Um, that just ga- given the, the, the lot line constructions. Um, and the very kind of limited gaps that there, there really isn't much. Light and air, especially in the front of the building. Um, was there any thought given to? You know, increasing the, the si- the side yard setback so the residents would get more light and air?
Um, it would be really kind of worse stuff when you have to have the driveway. The driveway takes up so much space that it really makes the lot line to lot line kind of necessary. And then are you me- do you mean more apart on the floors above? Maybe that setback could have been larger.
Yeah.
Um, but I, I do think with, you know, we have between three and five feet between our neighbor and then another three to four feet for the setback. I do think we're getting more room than, than most buildings would have, uh, in Jersey City. And that, that is the lower building. Luckily, it's a three-story building, but it's just a regular thirty-foot, three-story building. So I do think. There will be a decent amount of light and air in these apartments, including the middle one. Um, yeah, I would, I do think, I, so I do think they are gonna have more. A larger setback between our building and the building next to us than you typically would get in the Jersey City R one zone.
Okay, thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions or concerns? Okay, um, if not, then I'm asking someone to make a motion, uh, to vote on case. Z two-one dash O eight-two.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve, uh, case Z twenty-one. Dash O eight-two at seventy-five Crescent Avenue with all the, uh.
Second.
On the motion to approve with conditions, Commissioner Shadid.
Yes.
Commissioner Aruho.
Yes.
Commissioner Donnelly.
Uh, yes, but I want to note for the, the record that I really hated the argument about filling up a vacant lot.
Commissioner Park.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown. Oh, when the, uh, Commissioner Brown, you're on mute.
Yes.
Um, Commissioner Green.
Yes.
And Vice Madam Chair Coyle.
Yes.
Motion carries all in favor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Noted on my argument.
Good luck.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Should we keep going? We're on the last case. Iris, you're okay there?
Yes, I'm fine. Thank you.
Are we, it's seven twenty-five or so, so we're moving along here.
Yes.
Yes, see, um, so now we can hear case Z two-two, zero-two-nine. So Francisco, do you want to promote, um, Charles Harrington?
Yeah, he's. Team, is this everyone, Chuck?
Uh, it's Raul Cabato is our architect and Sam Bellamy, if he's up here. So, okay, um, I'll jump right in, uh.
Before you jump in, Chuck, let's just mark your notices. So Iris, we have his affidavit and proof of service. Notice of publication. So we'll mark it A one for this application.
A one is received and marked in evidence.
Thank you. Okay, Chuck, it's all, it's all you.
Okay, thank you. So for the record, Charles Harrington, uh, of Conne Foley on behalf of the applicant. So, um, the project that we are presenting here tonight, um, is also located in the R one zone. It's located. On Ocean Avenue. Uh, it is an oversized lot. Uh, it's seventy-five by a hundred, so it's seventy-five hundred square feet. Um, we are, uh, proposing. Uh, in four-story, uh, mixed-use building that will have, uh, a commercial use on the ground floor. Uh, and it'd be fifteen units and, uh, two affordable, uh, units. Uh, the, the agenda says one, but that, that'll be two. So two of the fifteen units would be affordable, uh, units. They would, uh, be. Uh, the mix and, and the, and the affordability type would be determined by the division of affordable housing. Subject to the UHAC requirements and, and agreement with them. Um, so with that said, we, uh, I, I can say we, we have, uh, worked with planning on this. Uh, the first project that you were seeing tonight, uh, is the result of, of, uh, comments and, and changes that were made. Uh, with planning. Uh, we also had a community meeting, um, I, as, as directed or, or scheduled. Um, with, uh, Councilwoman Ridley and some of the changes that were made to the project were a result of that as well. Um, so with that said, uh, I will jump right into our testimony with Mr. Cabato and. Similar to the last, um, application, we, we would like to, uh, mark, uh, a slide deck. Uh, in this instance as A two, uh, it's, uh, the same deck that, or same slides that were presented to the community. Uh, and we think that will help the, the board, uh, see the presentation a little bit better than looking at the, uh, the architectural plans. So Raul.
Mr. Cabato, do you swear that the testimony you provided this evening will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your full name and spell your last name for me.
Sure, it's Raul Cabato. Last name is C A B A T O.
And Ms. Carter, your address is please.
Uh.
Business address?
Seven sixty-one Montgomery Street, Jersey City, New Jersey.
Thank you.
Zero seven three zero six.
Thank you. Witness this warrant.
Okay, Mr. Cabato, as I indicated, you have a slide deck to use, uh, as part of your presentation tonight. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And, and we wanna mark that as A two?
Okay, yes.
And that will provide, uh, planning with a copy of that as well.
Eight-two is received and marked.
Okay, Raul, floor is yours.
Sure, uh, can everybody see the, the screen, the, the drawing? The project is located on the north side of Ocean Avenue between, um, Jefford Street and New Street. The subject lot is, uh, seventy-five feet wide by a hundred feet deep. Um, we are proposing a four-story structure with fifteen dwelling units, two of which shall be for affordable housing. And eight parking spaces.
And, and three of those, uh, parking spaces will be EV, correct?
That is correct. Okay, um. So here's a summary of, you know, what I just described. There is a commercial space on the ground floor also. And, um, I'm gonna go through that as we go through the floor plans. We are requesting variances for the principal use, the front and rear yard, uh, combined setback. We, uh, propose a twenty-foot rear yard, uh, but no front yard. We are also, uh, uh. Requesting advance for the maximum building height, the maximum building coverage and the number of parking spaces. I just wanted to note also that we are proposing, uh, the planting of three street trees along this, uh, the street frontage. Um. Proposed in a, is a cellar where the utility meter rooms and sprinkler rooms and trash refuse rooms shall be located. There shall also be an area for bike parking. Um, on the first floor shall be the lobby and eight parking spaces. There shall also be a commercial space. With an area of about nine hundred eighty-two square feet. Um, note that there shall be, um, a three-foot, uh, eight-inch side yard, uh, to the north. And a side yard of three foot, one inch to the south.
Raul, Raul, can you make those a little bit larger?
Sure.
Thank you.
Can you see that? Okay, uh, the north, uh, the north side yard, which is right here, shall also serve as an egress passageway. Uh, to the street. So you can see that there's a stair here and this would serve as an egress passageway to the street. Um, as far as floor plans, floors two, three and four shall consist of five apartments per floor. The, uh, most of them are, um, the, uh, of the five apartments, four shall be two bedrooms. The three-bedroom, uh, unit is the yellow, it's a highlighted in yellow here. The rest are two-bedroom apartments. Um, there's gonna be one three-bedroom unit on, um, one three-bedroom unit on the first, uh, on each floor. And four two-bedroom units. Um, on average, a two-bedroom unit shall be about eight hundred thirty square feet. Uh, in area and a three-bedroom unit shall be about one thousand eighty-four square feet in area. All the units shall have their own laundry facilities. So proposed on the roof are an outdoor roof deck as well as a multipurpose amenity space. Structure which, uh, and the, the amenity structure is about four hundred fifty square feet in area. Also on the roof shall be, um. A green roof element. Uh, the green roof element consists of self-draining plant trays. This particular system was selected for its ease of installation, reasonable cost and easy maintenance. The modular nature of the system ensures that replacing parts become effortless. The benefits include stormwater management, reduction of the heat island effect, reduction of energy usage. Noise reduction as well as visual and aesthetic benefits. Also to be located on the roof are the air conditioning, uh, condensing units. Um, as far as finishes, the front facade shall be clad in a brown brick with accents of wood-type fiber cement siding. The rear and sides shall be clad in light gray fiber cement siding. The base shall be clad in stucco applied to the concrete mason unit, uh, with a light gray finish. I also want to mention the cornice, the cornices, uh, shall be fiberglass type with a white finish. Um, this is a rendering of the, um, proposed building. And, um, just some. Shadow studies that were done. And, uh, the visual impact, just some images of the neighborhood.
And Raul, you, if you could point out that the buildings adjacent to this are mixed-use, uh, buildings, uh, correct?
That is correct. Um, that's, that pretty much concludes my, uh, presentation.
Okay, well then, uh, consistent with the first application, we'll move on to Mr. Bellamy and then, and then open it up for questions.
Bellamy, please raise your red hand. Do you swear that the testimony you provided this evening will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your full name, spell your last.
Samuel Bellamy, last name B E L L A M Y. And our address is One Ever Trust Plaza. Uh, Suite nine oh one, Jersey City, New Jersey.
Thank you, witness this warrant.
Okay, Ms. Bellamy, you've, uh, you heard the testimony of, uh, Mr. Cabato here tonight. Is that correct?
Uh, yes, I have.
Okay, and, uh, and could you address the, the requested variances, uh, tonight and then maybe touch upon the master plan, uh, as, as well as part of your testimony?
Sure, will do. And, and just for the record, I am a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. My license is current and in good standing. And, um, with the company Dresner Robin. Um, so getting into the variance relief tonight, we are located in the R one district, which predominantly permits. One and two family homes. Uh, we are proposing a mixed-use multifamily building. Um, so with that, we are requesting a D one use variance. Um, as you heard on the prior application, the, uh. Uh, the, the relief for this, uh, the, for a use variance is showing that a site is particularly well-suited to accommodate, uh. The, the proposed, um, proposed intensity and, and, and use on the lot. Um, so just to orientate the board back to the, back to the site, um, our site is located along Ocean Avenue. Um, Ocean Avenue is a major north-south corridor through Jersey City. Um. Along Ocean Avenue, you do have a, a wide variety and mix of, of uses, um, anywhere from commercial, multifamily, uh, mixed use. With the ground floor, commercial and residential above. Um, there's institutional uses, uh, one block south is an elementary school. And then across Ocean Avenue from the site is the, uh, is a cemetery. Um, so there are a mix of uses along this, uh, north-south corridor. Um, generally, it is a higher intensity, uh, corridor. Um, this block in particular, you have mixed-use buildings to the south and north. Um, further north, there's also auto- automotive uses. Um, so it is a higher intensity, uh, corridor, not your traditional. R one, one and two family, um, district here. Um, with respect to the, the site aspects itself, the site is seventy-five hundred square feet. Um, that is substantially larger than the twenty-five hundred, um, your standard, uh, required and typical R one district lot. So this is a, a larger lot that can accommodate a, a greater, a greater intensity, um, along with. Being consistent with the adjacent uses. Um, we are proposing fifteen units here on the seventy-five hundred, uh. Foot lot that, that calculates as eighty-seven units per acre. Um, we did take a look at the surrounding densities to kinda. Um, to make sure that we're proposing something that's in line with. We did take a look at the surrounding densities to kind of, to make sure that we're proposing something that's in line with the intensity already in in the surrounding area. We did find a variety of multifamilies ranging from fifty-two units per acre to under fifty-two units per acre. So we lined up somewhere in the middle of those those ranges. As I said, there are mixed-use buildings to the south of this property. We are consistent with the densities on those property again and bringing a mixed-use building to this corridor to really activate the streetscape and and bring it in line with the surrounding area. There's also multifamily buildings to the north. Again, we are consistent with the the density of those buildings. We are proposing a greater number of units, but again, given the substantially larger lot size here, that is larger than the surrounding properties, our density falls right in the range of of those surrounding surrounding densities. We did take a look at the master plan to kind of guide the development of this property. The master plan does call out Ocean Avenue as a neighborhood corridor, and that that is defined in the master plan as being a major street that generally has a mix of uses and higher, higher densities compared to those neighboring side streets. So we do think our proposal is not only in line with what the surrounding development is, is also in line with that that vision and and that identity of of the master plan here. So with that, I I do find that the site is particularly well-suited for this mixed-use multifamily building. The project does advance the purposes of the municipal land use law. I do think this is an appropriate use and development of the property, again, bringing it in line with the surrounding development, bringing it from a one-story formerly house of worship to to a mixed-use multifamily building that's more in line with the surrounding development. Would promote the general welfare here, consistent with purpose A. I'll get into the bulk criteria a little bit further in my testimony, but I do think that the proposal itself does provide for adequate light air and open space, consistent with purpose C. The density, heard me speak to the surrounding densities of the multifamily and mixed-use buildings. So I do think we promote a popular, an appropriate population density that will contribute to the well-being of persons, neighborhoods and communities, consistent with purpose E. And then finally, I I do think developing this property with a four-story mixed-use building is in line with the surrounding massing and and would improve the streetscape, consistent with purpose I. There are several bulk variances that we are seeking. Again, this is a use variance, so these, the bulk criteria does apply to one- and two-family homes in the R one district. So they are subsumed within these variants that we're we're seeking, but to be conservative, we did we did call them out. One is for the maximum building coverage. We are proposing a building coverage of seventy-two point eight percent where maximum sixty percent is permitted. That additional building coverage does allow for a ground floor layout that provides eight parking spaces along with the commercial space on the ground floor, above the ground floor, and you heard from our architect the layouts of the units being all two-bedroom and three-bedroom units. They do have an average of, I believe it's approximately eight hundred eighty-one square feet, so these are nicer, larger units. These aren't your smaller studios and ones, so they are nice-sized units and and appropriate for for this area and for the building and on on this specific property. The the project is proposing a lot coverage of eighty percent, so that's within the maximum eighty-five percent permitted in the R one district, so we are under that requirement. And then we are providing a stormwater detention system as well as green roofing to help manage stormwater runoff here. With respect to the rear yard setback, we are proposing a twenty-foot rear yard setback. That does meet the minimum rear yard setback requirement. Where we're sure of the requirement is that the combined front and rear yard setback at thirty-five feet. In this case, the the surrounding developments do have zero-foot front yard setbacks, so we think building on that front yard lot line is appropriate here, again, providing the commercial space, activating the streetscape. I think that was really an intention with this development. The twenty-foot rear yard setback is consistent with the surrounding properties. The building directly to the north does have a zero-foot rear yard, so really, there's no direct impacts to that yard. And then the buildings to the south are are larger multifamily buildings as well. Being the orientation of the of the block of this property, I think most of our shadows would fall either on the directly on the the adjacent buildings and into the right-of-way, so I don't see any substantial detriment from the proposed rear yard setback here. Getting into parking, since we are a seventy-five-foot wide lot, parking is required on lots in the R one district that are fifty feet or greater. Again, the parking requirements are specific to one- and two-family homes, being that we are a use variance proposing a mixed-use multifamily building. They aren't directly comparable to this project, but the requirement would be one space per unit, so fifteen spaces for the fifteen units. We're proposing eight spaces, a little, little greater than point five, point five spaces per unit. We, again, we are proposing a a commercial space in the front of the building. We think that is more consistent with the surrounding area, would help to activate the streetscape. So really, the benefits of having that commercial space, space versus additional parking space here, I think those benefits would outweigh the detriment. We are proposing bicycle parking spacing in the in the cellar. And then from a location standpoint, we're seven point seven miles from the the Richard Street Light Rail Station. So that's not within your your traditional point-five walking distance, but I I think we're right around there. And then the master plan also identifies the Old Bergen Road and Danforth Avenue and Lembeck Avenue as small-scale neighborhood centers. Those are point-three miles away, they provide for a mix of neighborhood services, so I think that helps support the, not only the increased density on the property, but also and reduced auto automobile depend dependency on this property. The other bulk variances are related to the rooftop appurtenances. The stair bulkhead will have a zero-foot setback, so it's it's at the front of the building. And that's where nine feet and five inches would be required. The residential lobby is located at the front corner of the building, so really that staircase goes directly up to mitigate the impacts of having this this the bulkhead at the front of the building. We are proposing to continue those facade materials directly up to really to to really make it part of the the rest of the building rather than a standalone a bulkhead. The elevator bulkhead is located directly behind the stair bulkhead, so we're kind of consolidating where where these bulkheads are located, again, to kind of minimize the the impacts of of the of the setback variance here. The other variances for the rooftop appurtenance bulkhead height, the elevator bulkhead will have a height of fourteen feet where a maximum of ten feet is permitted for buildings up to forty-five feet. Again, this is directly behind the stair bulkhead, so it's not at the front of the building, does meet the setback requirement. The elevator bulkhead will provide for elevator access to the rooftop amenity space, allowing for ADA access to the top of the building. So I I don't see any impacts here, and I think the the benefits allowing ADA access to the the rooftop amenity space would substantially outweigh any detriments. Finally, going going back to the the maximum building height, we're proposing a height of four stories, forty-three feet. That's where a maximum of three stories and thirty feet is permitted for buildings with a flat roof, ten-foot floor-to-floor in the R one district. This would be under a D six height variance. This is tested against a more relaxed standard when you're asking for a use variance, given that the the use isn't contemplated in the zone. I do think that the height is consistent with the surrounding development and the site can accommodate the the increased height here. As I said, that the property is located along Ocean Avenue, that has a seventy-five-foot right-of-way width, so it is a greater, more intense and and greater corridor. And in addition, we are adjacent to, across the street from the cemetery, so I I think just given the orientation of the property, given the substantial size of the property, the 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 property can accommodate the the greater height here. So with that, again, I I do think that we meet the site suitability test. I do think we can accommodate the the building height, and I do think not only are the the bulk variances soon, but I I do think that the benefits would substantially outweigh the detriments here. So that's with respect to the positive criteria. Moving into the negative criteria, I don't see any substantial detriment to the general welfare here. Again, I think this is an appropriate use and development of the property. On the setbacks we're proposing do allow for light air and open space. You heard from Mr. Cabato, we are proposing three E V parking spaces as well as green roofing, stormwater detention. We're adding new street trees, we're improving the streetscape, so I think those are all positive aspects and and there won't be any substantial detriment here. Likewise, I don't find any substantial impairment to the tenant purpose of the zone plan or zoning ordinance. You heard me reference the, some of the the recommendations and and the, what the master plan identifies as Ocean Avenue being a a higher-intensity district. It does call for a general look at upzoning the property, allowing for a more of a neighborhood commercial development here. So I think we're in line with that vision, and as I said, I I do find this property to be particularly well-suited. So with that, I I think this application does meet both the positive and negative criteria. I know I covered a lot, so I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board might have.
Sam, if I could before you go, just I wanted to talk a little bit about the affordable housing that's part of this. So we have two units and and it's required because of the inclusionary zoning ordinance and this project being fifteen proposed units, that's correct?
Yeah, that that's correct, and and fifteen units is really the threshold for triggering the I Z O. So at at fifteen units proposed, we're 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 triggering that, which requires one point five units. That's rounding up to two here, so we are, we are fulfilling the the I Z O requirement with this project.
Right, and so just for the benefit of everybody, if if the project had been proposed as fourteen units, that would not be required as part of the application, correct?
That's correct.
And then conversely, if you had sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty units proposed, it would still only be a requirement of two units, correct?
That's correct, it would still round up to two in in those scenarios.
So the project is is proposing the minimum threshold and 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 the and the and the two units.
That's correct.
Okay, and then just again, I just want to talk, address this a little bit, Charles Height addressed. It's kind of the flip side of the inclusionary zoning ordinance, which is the affordable housing overlay zoning ordinance, and that that is an ordinance where if you apply that to a project and provide your ten percent affordable units, then there is no density requirement anymore and no parking requirement anymore, is that correct?
That's correct, and and the use the multifamily would would also be permitted in in this R one district.
Okay. I just, I just wanted to point that out as a perspective, because that, we don't think that's a good project, obviously, for this site, because we we think the four stories with the parking is is more appropriate, correct?
That's correct, and and with the the commercial space on the ground floor as well.
Okay. Alright, so I I have no further questions, that would complete our presentation, so.
Thank you. Francisco, do we have anyone in the public out there to address or ask any questions?
I don't, no, I don't see any hands raised at this moment.
Okay, do any members of the committee have any questions or concerns for the, where our presenters?
I'd like to hear more about the traffic report. So I I saw that as part of the the application, and I have a question about the high injury or network, that classification, it's not in all streets, but it is on Ocean Avenue. Is there someone who can talk me through?
I think we don't have our traffic engineer here engineer here tonight, we kind of submitted on on that report, but maybe we could address your questions myself or or Mr. Cabato.
Yeah, so I mean, my concern is, obviously, it's so close to a school, and so we're, it it appears from reading the traffic report, and it wasn't addressed by anyone from your tonight so far. So, you know, it's two lanes, it's already high injury, adding, I I guess maybe the best thing, the best question for me, sorry, would be the the chart at the end, can someone explain to me at what point that actually triggers there being a concern?
In the traffic report?
In the traffic report, because I I was looking at how many ins and how many outs, and I just don't feel like I'm knowledgeable enough to know whether there is a concern or what numbers actually would trigger a concern.
And I don't, yeah, since we don't have the traffic engineer here, I don't, I don't think we can, you know, we have the ability right now to address that, unfortunately.
That's fair, maybe, but my other question is, I didn't see a staff report, so is, perhaps the staff report might have addressed that?
So my staff report doesn't touch on the traffic study, I'm not a traffic engineer, so I don't really know too much about that. But I, my staff report does touch on some of the items that Mr. Bellamy and Mr. Cabato had.
Francisco, I didn't actually see it in the application, so.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't put it up, but I can share my screen and show you guys.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Alright. Alright, so the main thing I wanted to show you guys, I don't really want to repeat too much of Mr. Bellamy's testimony, but I did want to orient the board and show everyone an aerial image of what the site looks like from above, just to get everyone oriented and I did want to speak the fact that this lot is substantially oversized and it's tripled the size of the standard R one lot. So your standard R one lot is twenty-five hundred square feet, where this is seventy-five hundred square feet. Again, this, I'm just reiterating, the applicant's proposing fifteen units, it does trigger the inclusionary zoning ordinance, which requires two affordable units, as was mentioned. I do want to get into the density aspect, so this, I do like doing charts and visuals, so I'll jump into the chart first. Of the other R one residential properties on the block, several are existing non-conforming multifamily structures. The proposed multifamily use is like that, the existing multifamily building stock on the block. So you'll see I have highlighted those that are red, and they'll correspond to a visual on the next page. This highlighted in gray is what is being proposed, so you can see in terms of density, it is in line with what is existing in the block. So I'll show you a visual of what the block is. So highlighted here in the circle is the specific block where the site is located. Now, they're color-coordinated based on density or dwelling units per acre. And we'll see that the lot proposed, or the lot in question today is highlighted here. And then immediately next to it, the two neighboring structures are over what is permitted in the R one. I believe they are fifty fifty-three units an acre, both of them. And then we do have some that are over a hundred, so a little over a block, and then over two blocks away. So it is the opinion of the staff that the applicant meets the following intent of the land use objectives of Jersey City Master Plan. One is to continue the efforts to enhance residential neighborhoods and to ensure the city's availability of housing is balanced and meets the needs of all current and future residents. It also is the opinion of the staff that this advances the New Jersey municipal land use law specifically to secure safe from flood. So the applicant's proposing new landscaping in the front, including three new street trees where none exist on the block today. There's not one street tree at all. In addition, the applicant is installing a green roof that covers over seven hundred and twenty square feet on the rooftop and a water retention system in the parking garage on the ground floor in order to mitigate rainwater. Purpose E, to promote the establishment of appropriate population densities. So in terms of positive criteria, the proposal is restoring this currently abandoned I believe it's, it's an abandoned building, so they're restoring it to residential use in accordance with the zone district. The proposed multifamily is appropriate for the oversized nature of the lot. The proposal will also conform to, I believe, the lot coverage, side yard, rear yard requirements per the R one standards. And I do have some photos for everyone to see. A multifamily use is the predominant condition of the residential properties on the block. So you'll have your ground floor retail at the bottom and then your residential at the top. As far as negative criteria, the existing non-conform, non-conformities help validate that the use is not out of character. The proposal also promotes more commercial activity on Ocean Ave by providing almost a thousand square feet of retail. The commercial corridor on Ocean Ave will benefit from the increased density of the proposal, and therefore the benefits outweigh the detriments. In staff's opinion, the lot can handle the proposed amount of density on the existing lot, therefore staff sees no substantial impairment. Therefore, staff sees no substantial impairment of the intent of the nearby zone or master plan, should the variances be canceled. But I did want to show the board some photos towards the end. So this is sort of a street view. Now, these are the multifamily mixed-use buildings near it. And then I did want to go over to nearby blocks, so this is something that I did dig into a little bit of Ocean Ave history. Ocean Ave was predominantly a mixed-use corridor. So you'll see, I found that this was quite interesting. It happened about in the two thousands, where a lot of lots that were empty or previously malacolated buildings, they were converted into what today, bayon boxes. So I did do some history, specifically these two lots. You can see from the, with the tax map, it always was a mixed-use area, whether it consists of commercial or commercial on the bottom and retail at the top. And so that's one of the things I found interest interesting. With that said, staff does recommend approval, and I do have some conditions for this project as well.
Any other committee members have, commissioners have anything to say? I have, I have a question. I'm sorry, does somebody have something to say? How many spots are there for bicycles?
Girl?
Right now, currently, we're showing eight spots for bicycles. We certainly have room for fifteen. But we're we're showing eight right now.
Okay, and you're showing eight parking spaces, but three of those spaces are for EV vehicles. So, right, okay, so there aren't that many people at the moment that have EV vehicles, maybe they will back then, but a question, I know the neighborhood, and there are lots of stores up and down in different commercial spaces. How many parking spaces would you get if you didn't put the commercial space in the front of that building?
Yeah, if I, if I could just comment on that, while Raul's looking at that. The first, the EV spaces can still be used by others to park within the garage. They're, you know, they're, if nobody has an an electric vehicle, they'll they'll be used as as parking. And then the commercial space is something that that really resulted from our discussions with with planning. They they did not want to see a blank wall there and and just have it all garage. They wanted to see a presence there. And that's, that's kind of, that's why that's there. We we initially did have more parking within the garage, and they they wanted to continue. You know, I could, you know, Francisco could could, you know, speak to that, but they they rec- requested that that we provide for commercial space for activization, if that's a word, on the, on the ground floor.
Yeah, that that is correct. The project initially, I believe, back in two thousand twenty-one, was this, or twenty-two, early twenty-two? It came in, I think, at twelve units with twelve, so it was one-to-one, twelve units to twelve parking spaces. But it just made more sense that the existing Ocean Ave does have commercial to add commercial, rather than just have a blank wall that is used only for parking spaces. And it sort of attracts people from walking and making the space a little bit more dense, especially since you do have the cemetery across the street. It already is sort of empty.
A lot of people in that cemetery, Francisco.
Yeah.
They will be part of the pedestrian traffic.
Okay, I have no other questions, and and no other commissioners have any questions, so we're okay, hey, Francisco, okay, can I get can I get a motion?
I actually do see one Henrys. I'm not sure if we did close the public.
I just never closed it. You just said there was no way there, but
should, Vinnie, should
You might as well. I mean, there's only one, but let's hear what he has to say. It's probably going to be for a different application, wanting to know if it's on or off.
Yeah. Hi, Lucia, can you unmute yourself, please?
Yes. Hello.
Hi, is this for this?
No, I'm interested in the Glenwood Avenue property.
Which one specifically?
One twenty-eight.
So one has carried, let me just double-check for you. So that one will return on July thirteenth. That's our regular scheduled meeting, and you will not receive another notice. But it is, it should go forward on the July thirteenth meeting. I'm sorry, recommend you come back on July thirteenth.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we closed out the public portion. Can someone make a motion for case Z two-two dash oh-two-one? Oh, two-nine? Two-nine, yes, okay.
Oh, two-nine.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve with conditions the location at two seventy-five Ocean Ave, case Z twenty-two dash oh-two-nine.
Is someone's
I heard it. On a motion to approve with conditions, Commissioner Shadid?
Yes.
Commissioner Aruho? Commissioner Donnelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Park?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown? Oh, I didn't hear it. Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Vice Madam Chair Coyle?
Yes.
Motion carries, all in favor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Moving along, do we have any resolutions that we want to memorialize?
Yes, we have two. Hold on one second. So both of these applications were heard on June fifteenth. And on June fifteenth, the acting chair was Commissioner Green. The other commissioners were Commissioners Shadid, Arroyo, Silva, Allen, and Patel. And both of these applications, I believe, you know, were were approved, six in favor, none opposed. So the first application that was heard on June fifteenth, that's going to be memorialized here, is Z twenty-two dash zero-two-zero. The applicant was the Twenty-One Halb, that's H A L B L L C. That was for Twenty-One Gardner Avenue. It was a conditional use variance renovation and the raising of a roof of a pre-existing three-family home. So again, that application was approved, six in favor, none opposed, all in favor of memorializing that.
Aye.
And and the next was also approved, six in favor, none opposed. And that was case Z twenty-three dash zero-two-six. The applicant was the Avenir LP. It was a one-year extension of a preliminary and final site plan with variances. The extension would run until August first of twenty-twenty-four. The address is ten seventy-two dash ten seventy-five West Side Avenue. So that application for the one-year extension was approved, six in favor, none opposed. Favor of memorializing that is, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
That that concludes the resolutions to memorialize, and I imagine that concludes our business, but.
We have no reason to go into executive session, right, at this moment? No.
I want to say something, but I I don't see her, so I doubt it.
Well.
Don't. We're done early today.
Everyone have a wonderful weekend.
Wonderful.
Yeah, but one second.
Yeah, yeah, just one second, one second.
Do you want to close the meeting, close the?
Yes, please.
Kit, Kit, one second.
Yeah.
Yeah, close the, Francisco?
Yeah, I'm on it.
One more. Okay. Okay.
Okay, Kate was talking about getting together earlier, so.
Yeah.
Are we, are we?
I think we should.
Yeah.
Especially just want to say, Kim, it was really great being with you on this board. I really appreciate your comments.